Okay.
Yep.
All right, I call the planning meeting to order for the November fourth meeting. So these things off, uh, roll call.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ruto.
Present.
Mr. Huguen.
Right.
Mr. Lindberg.
Here.
Mr. Royson.
Here.
And, uh, Mr. Kurtz is absent, uh, which Mr. Grifeld volunteered himself to kind of be the chair tonight, so he'll be here on the meeting.
Volunteered conscripted.
Yeah.
However, well, um, call for notice of agenda complaints.
There's a motion.
I would maintain a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm that the notice for this November fourth twenty twenty four regular meeting was completed in accordance with the Idaho Code Section seventy four dash two zero.
It moved, we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Most passes. All right, uh, do we have any, I can't imagine there's a, any conflict with anything on the agenda that anybody have any conflicts with, with anything?
No.
Uh, public comments, uh, all open for public comment for any items, uh, that are not on the agenda. Anyone on one?
Don't think we have. Two step.
I'm the only one.
Right, I will close out the comment. Uh, next item on the agenda, approval of meeting minutes for October seventh meeting. Would you have any concerns or issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from the October seventh PNC meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Bunch of passes. All right, work session?
Uh, yes. Okay, so, uh, at last week's city council meeting, the, uh, voted to deny the, uh, text amendment that was currently in its current form and, uh, directed staff to go back and kind of do a little reset on it. Uh, and so we're going to kick off that process. Um, the draft, uh, scope work objectives is in your packet here. Um, mostly just looking for feedback on that and, uh, actually guys on the process.
Do you have specific feedback from the meeting, the council meeting, like why, like what about it wasn't good enough, like what, you know what I mean?
Um.
Just so we understand.
It was mostly that it was kind of a cobbled together concept from a few different sources and
Mm-hmm.
seemed better to, one, kind of treat the development application end of it as a development application. Um, so there, so I'm going to be doing a code amendment for that, uh, to enable it to be used, use the PUD standards.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in business zones for, uh, more flexibility and project entitlement. Uh, so that'll be coming back to you guys in the next, uh, few weeks. Um, but, and then just kind of, like I said, reset, look at it holistically, uh, how's the business zone working now, what can we do better?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
So would you say, I mean, in this, I'm just getting from what I got, um, on the article in the paper called the meeting and stuff. So you're saying, um, that you kind of just disagreed with the formatting and like the approach of it? And how, how was like the context of it being taken, you know, does that make sense, like?
Yeah.
Does it seem like you are suggesting we kind of go at it differently than the other, um, engineers recommended, which is, which is fine? I'm just trying to understand, like, if there was something about kind of the intent behind it that wasn't good, is that what you think?
Yeah, um. I don't know that the end result is necessarily going to be a whole lot different. It might be, I don't really, that's kind of, you know, we want to let the process play out before we get to the end goal or the outcome.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, it seemed like there was a desire for more public engagement, more, um, work sessions on it, yeah, just kind of flush things out a little further, really investigate things more. Um, than had been done previously.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think that's a lot.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to understand, um, what can help it pass in the future, I suppose, right?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to get a picture on that.
Yeah.
What did you do in the, on, kind of next steps? Uh, order of operations? Kind of workflow process sort of stuff.
Yeah, so I think your next immediate step are going to be, uh, stay tuned for a doodle poll or something along those lines for scheduling a joint work session, city council.
Yeah.
Uh, that was something they specifically thought was a good idea.
Great idea.
Uh, and then, yeah, I think, uh, from that point, it's going to kind of depend on if we get busy with applications or if we stay pretty quiet, uh, whether we do a few small work sessions and kind of flush things out uh, piece by piece, or if we schedule a special meeting, uh, down the road and get into a bigger session.
Hmm. What should we be focused on accomplishing in the initial work sessions, like, right now?
It's a good question.
Hmm, okay.
Not, uh, put together yet.
Oh, okay, so still in draft, gotcha.
Yeah, we get it.
Hmm.
And outline of that meeting put together.
Oh, okay.
We get to see the survey going out to the public? Or are we going to be creating the survey?
I will create the survey, um. Wouldn't be a bad idea for you guys to do that.
Just that, I'm, I'm not saying like to even like offer suggestions just to re, just to see it.
Yeah, yeah.
And do you think the, the upcoming joint work session would be something we're going over, um, side by side with the city council and like, and that's when we'd be looking at a draft of something and then?
Um, I don't think you'll have draft language at that time.
Okay. What do you expect, uh, what's the best way for us to come prepared to a joint work session then? You know, because it's kind of like our initial ideas are already laid out on the table, all right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I'm just wondering how best to come to that. I know it's a ways off.
Yeah, but it's not that far off either.
Yeah. Hmm.
Yeah, I think I have that scheduled for early December or something, you know? There we go, it's the late in November.
Yeah. Before Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Um, oh, the twenty fifth, sorry.
Um, I have, uh, a gap in there, like, uh, specified today, could create a schedule, yeah. Yeah, to get back to the original question, how to be prepared, uh, wanted to be a fairly facilitated discussion, um, so all to be put together and getting back it and having guys do that and
Oh.
I thought, um.
Cool.
Uh, kind of in the, in the interim, you have, I know this is kind of already asked, you, you have, uh, input or feedback on, was it more the, more the, uh, content and the, and the goal of what we had put together that was, um, the council wasn't comfortable with? Or was it the, kind of the angle of attack and the, and the, the method of trying to achieve it? Or a little both, or kind of what was?
More of the latter, like, how it was drafted to, to have a process, right, to, to do that.
Okay.
Or why they were wanting it.
Yeah, I get that. Because I, I mean, and I imagine they feel more confident now that we have you here with us, um, to kind of talk about doing that in a different way. It's a little discouraging, I mean, I think for us just, I mean, taking the advice of professionals that were hired by the city, but, but I understand that different people have different perspectives and other ways to approach it, so I'm glad to hear that the context was, sounds like that was accepted for the most part.
Yeah.
No?
No, it didn't.
Okay, because that's what I was trying to ask you, is like, if something was not accepted, like, that's what I'm
Well, actually, really did not get into the actual meat of the
Oh.
text amendment during meeting, um, not like really substantively.
Okay.
But it sounds like there's not really necessarily all that much for us to discuss tonight, then.
No, I don't think so.
Perfect.
So that work session tends to be on our next PNC meeting day of the eighteenth? Or would it be?
Hypothetically, but more likely be an additional meeting.
Okay. Probably sometime in that same week.
Yeah.
Is that our next meeting, eighteen?
Uh, that's what I have.
Um, if everyone else can be here, I have two board meetings that I don't want to miss, but if I need to be here for a vote, then just let me know.
Uh, I'll be out of town on the fourteenth through the seventeenth. So will I.
Of November.
Of November. But I should be back for the, for the eleventh.
Oh, that's my grandpa's birthday, of course.
I'm around, yeah. Okay.
Um, and then if there's something, this, a special meeting that gets scheduled, like, I'm not the week of Thanksgiving, but I can see it.
Right? Um, could I make a comment?
Uh, sure.
Yeah.
Um, so I did a preview in the paper about the meeting tonight, and I was under the impression that the PNC was going to review the business zone text language through the objectives that you had in mind to find if, just generally, the PNC commission felt that it was suitable moving forward and keeping with the comp plan and such. I might have been mistaken in that, Brian, or that there was going to be a review of the business zone tonight.
Uh, I don't think anything like that.
That memo that I read, referred on, wasn't doing that in effect?
Uh, the, um, the, the memo, memo that I prepared was really kind of outlining the process moving forward at a very high level.
Um, yeah. This is the first step?
Yes.
In that process? High, lower, whatnot, when the commission can go through that particular code make general judgments, not specific to the development that was on Main Street and Broadport or affordable housing necessarily, just in general. That's, isn't that, is that not what the evening is about tonight?
It is, but it's the, the very, very first baby step in that direction.
Nevertheless, public meeting, I just want to get my head around my own mirror, and I thought I had it straight on my head. I, you were going to your workshop discussing the business zone um, in the city code in general.
Um.
And have everyone.
Will be a big part of the work session.
All right.
No, the, uh, joint work session. No, the, uh, joint work session with the council.
Okay, so tonight that was not the goal?
No.
Separately within PNC?
That was not my idea.
Thank you.
Do you, and if you have anything else you'd like to discuss about, kind of, on?
No?
Process or the initial thoughts?
Yeah, seems like we have a really good detailed timeline here. Um, and yeah, according to the important session, it's productive.
Okay. I guess I'd entertain a motion here.
Make a motion here in general.
Oh, in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Alright.
You guys have a good evening.
See you later.
Sure, see you later.